Super. Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Jeff Tocchio. I'm the chairman of the Hingham Business Council. And this morning, we've got a conversation with Joe Fisher, who is the chairman of the Hingham Board of Selectmen. Hingham Business Council is an arm of the South Shore Chamber, and we thank Peter Foreman, who is the CEO, president of the Chamber, all of a sudden, excuse me, all. So we have Eric Dykman, who runs these, puts them together on behalf of the Chamber. He's the liaison with the business councils. And we've got Mark Ryan, we've got John Ben Manion, and then we've got Jim Murphy, who are here there on the board that runs the council with me. We've got Joe Fisher again this morning, and this is being recorded for the Hingham local cable media. So this will be showing on local cable in Hingham. With that, Joe Fisher, if I can introduce you, if you're there, if you can make an introduction. And what I'll be doing is asking you to comment on where we are in Hingham now, post-COVID, where we were, where we're going. And what we'd like to do is to have you have a discussion that I can facilitate, and then we'll follow up some questions at the end.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. So I'd like to thank the group for the invitation. When I was initially invited to speak, I was hoping we'd be able to meet in person. I think I asked Jim Murphy to provide breakfast, but obviously, we're not meeting in person. We have to recognize that COVID is still with us, and it's really safer to meet via Zoom. And then we had a meeting originally scheduled for last month, and then a storm hit the South Shore. We dropped trees, caused major powder outages, so we needed to reschedule this get together for today. So that leads me to the first two topics I want to cover, which are COVID and storms. Just as many businesses were adversely affected by the pandemic, the town of Hingham experienced a decrease in revenue and an increase in demand for services. When budgeting for fiscal year 21, amidst all the uncertainty about the pandemic, we had projected about a $3.3 million revenue shortfall based on the information available at the time. Revenue was down due to impacts on restaurants. Our meals tax revenue was negatively impacted, about 45% down from fiscal year 20, and 27% down from fiscal year 21, in fiscal 21 from 19. We also saw a drop in auto excise receipts. So revenue was down, costs were up. We had unbudgeted COVID-related items such as PPE for our schools and municipal facilities. Technology was needed for remote work and remote learning, new cleaning and sanitation products and things like that. So the town's response, what did we do? We used fund balance, which is our reserves, to close the budget for fiscal year 21 to avoid prematurely cutting services. We implemented expenditure controls for fiscal year 21, such as delaying filling vacancies and deferring certain capital projects until we could better evaluate the financial impact of the pandemic. We took advantage of the federal CARES funds in fiscal year 20, 21, and 22 to pay for unbudgeted COVID-related items. As many of you know CARES, that's the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. That's the CARES Act. We also obtained about $1.4 million in ESER funding. ESER funding, that's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. And then we've got about $1.2 million in American Rescue Plan funds. The American Rescue Plan just nationally delivered about $350 billion for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to respond to the COVID-19 emergency. And we responded to the needs of local businesses, particularly the local restaurants, who are experiencing devastating conditions as patrons were not able to dine indoors. So the select board, we held hearings almost on a weekly basis to modify restaurant permits so they could operate outside. We coordinated with the State Alcohol Beverage Control Commission to modify the liquor permits so that drinks could be served outside. We also made sidewalk space available to restaurants. We assisted in installing barriers to protect outside diners from vehicular traffic on the streets while they were dining outside. For all businesses, the town of Hingham staff were working with locals, organizations, and the public to increase awareness and compliance with the state's guidelines during the pandemic. The town published social distancing guidelines and posters for use by town businesses. And during the height of COVID, we opened a testing center, which is available, was available to town residents and businesses to make it easier to obtain a COVID test. And we worked with the MBTA to preserve train, bus, and ferry service to and from Hingham while the pandemic was going on and there were cuts looming. So overall, the town of Hingham has benefited from a strong financial position, and our town really has fared better than many other communities during COVID-19. What I'd like to know, after we conclude this part of the discussion, is how the town of Hingham could do better in supporting businesses. I'd like to hear from the people on the call, either this morning or by the email, what more the town can do to assist these businesses, you folks, in the coming months. Now, let's talk about storms. The storm we had a few weeks ago was classified as a bomb cyclone. It was more powerful and destructive as any recent memory, possibly the last time we experienced a storm so bad was Hurricane Carol in 1954. It was the ultimate stress test for our light department and for our Department of Public Works. The town arranged for its own crews and outside crews to be available, both to do line work and tree clearing. The town crews and outside crews were in the field cleaning up the homes and businesses that lost power. The crews worked from about 6:00 a.m. to midnight every day. The town pulled out all stops, and our employees came through with an incredible effort. And I trust that the businesses and residents felt secure and supported during the storm. And we intend to achieve high levels of service during all storm events. That's a priority for this town. So now I want to turn and ask the folks on the call, one second here, about their own priorities, priorities as business owners, operators, and professionals. And I'd like you to consider two topics that are currently a priority for the town. Addressing climate change and improving handicap accessibility. The first priority concerns climate change. This past May, the Hingham Town Meeting adopted Article 14. I'm just going to read to you what Article 14 provides. Quote, "The town voted to establish a climate action planning committee, charged with establishing a climate action plan, which will evaluate a wide range of carbon emission reduction strategies and propose measures within the town of Hingham to achieve a zero sum of carbon emissions produced and taken out of the atmosphere, net zero, by the year 2040 or other target deemed feasible." What does this mean for Hingham businesses? It means that energy efficiency, sustainable design, conservation, and renewable energy need to be your goals and our goals as we all plan for future activities. So I'd like the folks on the call to consider three action items. The first is to consider what you can do to move away from oil and gas and towards using electricity as your source of heat. That way, you take advantage of the energy efficiencies that the Hingham Light Plant has been developing. Second, you need to be aware that building codes are moving in the direction of requiring energy efficiencies. The International Code Council is in the process of developing a net-zero building code. And California, you probably have read, has already passed legislation mandating a net-zero building code. Here in Massachusetts, we have the Stretch Energy Code, which has now been adopted by most of the cities and towns. The Stretch Code provides a much higher level of energy efficiency than is provided by the base code. Hingham adopted the Stretch Energy Code at our 2018 annual town meeting. So please be aware of regulatory requirements and where they're headed. And the third action item on the environment is, I'd like to encourage folks to get involved in the planning process. As I noted, the Hingham Town Meeting established a Climate Action Planning Committee last May. That committee is charged with establishing a climate action plan that will directly affect businesses and residents. So the businesses have an opportunity to participate in developing that plan, but you'll need to speak up and have your voices heard. Meetings of that committee are posted on the town's website, and I'd encourage folks to attend. The second priority goal that I'd encourage you to consider is to take action and making your places of business more accessible to and more welcoming to persons with disabilities. Communities just about everywhere have seen an increase in the number of residents with some type of disability, people with a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. In Hingham, about 8% of the town's population has a disability as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Hingham has a very active commission on disabilities. The charge of that commission is to collaborate with community leaders, residents, and businesses to promote awareness related to all forms of disabilities, including cognitive developmental and physical impairments. So what can you as business leaders do? There are a number of steps you can take. The most obvious step is to welcome persons with disabilities into your establishment. If someone seeks access with a guide dog, recognize the value and needs of this person and don't turn them away. Your business should allow service animals and mobility devices. Consider rearranging furniture, such as tables, chairs, vending machines, and display racks to accommodate the needs of persons with disabilities. If there are handicap parking spots at your place of business, make sure they are used properly, and they're not used as temporary spots for persons who just want to do a quick stop at your store or office. No one but handicapped persons should be using those spots. And consider updating your business website to make the website more usable by persons with disabilities. Website accessibility takes into consideration potential barriers faced by certain users, such as poor color contrast, fonts that are hard to read when they're enlarged, or video files that don't have captions. There are relatively inexpensive plugins that you can do to add to your website to enhance its accessibility, including plugins that translate written text to spoken text, to spoken words. The town's goal, and I hope it's your goal, is to promote full integration of persons with disabilities into our community. Thanks.
Excellent. Joe, if we could start in on the zero sum that you started on.
Yep.
So for people to get involved, for example, the Climate Action Planning Committee, who appoints that committee? What, how is that made up?
So that committee was actually appointed, constituted at town meeting. And I can pull up, actually, if you go to the town website, you'll see who was on that committee. Their meetings are posted. They're representatives of the planning board, the schools. There are, I think it's 13 members. It's a very large committee. And their mission is to, or part of their mission, is really to outreach into the community to get input as to what our climate plan should look like.
And excuse my ignorance for not going through that, the article, but is there a business community liaison? Anyone appointed from that perspective?
Good question. Let me take a look. I'll just pull up the Warren article.
And it strikes me, I don't want to, I don't know anything about it, so this, you know, you know, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to draw conclusions, it just strikes me that something that's appointed at town meeting might be heavily skewed towards, you know, folks who are aligned with the, you know, kind of that core mission, and that it would be valuable to bring in additional voices.
Yep. So we have, let's see. A member, we've got the Energy Action Committee, the Cleaner Greener Hingham Committee, the School Committee, Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Development Industrial Commission, and members that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen and by the moderator.
Got it. All right, super. And if people were interested in that, is that something that they could follow up with you on if they needed additional information? I would also think the chamber may actually have some additional interest in that issue as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, what's the scope of that? I mean, are we talking about requiring electrification stations with new development? Or what's, what's the stated scope of that, or is that retrofitting properties? Is that just potentially applicable to new construction? How do you, how do you see some of their mandates and their scope of what their interests will be?
Well, in essence, you're asking me to predefine what the Climate Action Plan will be, and that is the charge of the committee. So I'm not going to step in and impose what I think should happen for that committee. They are meeting, and they are in fact developing the plan. The various options that you raised are in fact all options that are on the table.
Right.
The most immediate ones, which are being faced by two town projects, namely the Foster School Project and the Public Safety Facility Building, is building those to very high energy efficiency standards. So new construction is front and center.
Right. I got you. What we're seeing in other towns, we're doing a lot of, a lot of just apartment mixed-use type buildings. And often, very quickly, the questions have to do with what's being provided as far as electrification for vehicles. And I understand clients have been very quick to, you know, to step up on that because, one, they see that that's where everything's going, and apparently, the subsidies right now for utility companies are rather robust. So we're seeing a little bit of a pylon of interest when that question comes up. And, you know, hopefully, that's something that's low-hanging fruit for the, you know, for that committee to recommend.
Jeff, if I can just add, I mean, you're exactly right on that, and the town also has plans to be installing, I guess you'd call them electric pumps, just so you can fill your car with electricity.
Really? And what would, what would that, how would that work out? Would that be something that's on town property? Is that something that they would approach business owners and have, you know, separate facilities on other property?
The initial plan is for town property, but I think it makes sense to also approach town businesses.
Interesting. What about the, I mean, I could think of some town properties that would be kind of commercial-ish in nature. What's the position on the town with respect to having a filling station that could potentially be on some land that's, you know, could be recreational in nature or located near residential neighborhoods?
We have not gotten to that stage of planning. We're talking about something like at the Station Street Parking Lot would be a good example, where it'd be easy to do. There's plenty of space.
Right.
We've not gone to-
Bone more commercially. You mentioned earlier on Cushion Street, the former HMLP plant. That would strike me as something that's kind of residentially situated, but really has no, you know, real effect. And in the program for the COVID, you know, testing, I think, was just a huge success. The feedback that I've gotten has been just overwhelmingly positive.
Unfortunately, we really don't have that need now to have that testing center up.
Right.
You can go to CVS, other drugstores, and the testing is readily available now.
Excellent. Okay. With respect to the accessibility, and I can speak probably for Mark Ryan, myself, we just undertook that process at 175 Derby Street, which is condominium complex. Took about two years, and there was just an accessibility push that we did in conjunction with planning and CBA, but also with Mike Clancy, the Building Commission. I just want to mention, just I'll give you my feedback. I think it was a lot of, it was a lot of work initially, and I think that, you know, it was a little jarring for a lot of the different unit owners. But after it's done, I can't tell you just how positive that's been. And we were able, of course, to spread the costs out over time, and I think that that's really enhanced the value and the accessibility, obviously, of the businesses. Is there any thought to, if there's a retrofit, for example, funding, any type of funding mechanisms, anything of that nature? I think of sewer connection assessments, where properties are able to spread costs out over some time through a subsidy. Is that something that is even approaching some type of consideration, or is it on a list perhaps?
That is not on our radar. That's an interesting thought, because we do want to promote that kind of retrofitting to the extent it's needed. But a lot of this is actually more pure consideration and general awareness and welcoming of residents. There are clearly hard costs, but the soft cost, the soft activity is very important as well.
Excellent. Yeah, that's an excellent point. With respect to the outdoor, the table service, I just want to circle back on that. And I know you asked participants if anyone had any comments, but before hearing back, are there any plans to extend that? I just want to say that I live near the Square Cafe, for example, and I can't tell- what, I can't tell you how people's, just they beam when they see people out there eating. It's got a very, I don't know if, I don't know if it reminds me of Paris or Reykjavik, depending on the season, I guess.
I think I prefer Paris.
Yeah. Agreed. What are the, what are the thoughts? What's the town's overall longer-term view on that? Is this something that you're discussing with Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein? You know, what's the thing?
So to the extent those discussions happen, they would be in an open meeting, as you follow it. And we are, I mean, its staff is looking at it. There are state regulations involved. As I mentioned, it's not just the town rules, it's the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. So it's a coordinated effort, and our goal is to make sure that the restaurants are sustained, not just for the next couple of months, but on an ongoing basis.
Excellent. And what, what would, what would the position or your position be? Obviously, in front of, maybe it's not obvious, but in front of the Square Cafe, for example, you've got public, some of the, you know, the public owns much of the sidewalk and that.
That's right.
What would you foresee going forward as far as just the cooperation between the public and the private to make that something that would be longer-term sustainable?
Well, one of the things that we need to do, and I think the local businesses need to do, is coordinate among themselves, because there are, I guess, externalities that happen. Restaurants take up space. Well, then, does that block other people from being able to access retail shops? There's a cut down on parking so that, you know, we've got table space now. People can't park and go to the stores. So we need to do, reach a balance so that all of our local businesses are helped and not, we're not sacrificing one for the sake of another.
Would there, would there be a possible, you know, maybe this is a better question for Liz with her knowledge of the downtown. Would there potentially be an effort to coordinate parking? You know, in recent years, the town has recognized, you know, varying parking demands with changes during the day. Obviously, I look at some palberts, which during the day may have parking. In the evening, it's empty. Is that something that the town can facilitate, work with some of the businesses with respect to, you know, off-site parking, being able to support off-hours uses?
Yeah, so that is in fact the charge of the planning board, as you know, to look at exactly those types of issues to make sure that we achieve a reasonable balance. Another aspect is integrating the shipyard to downtown so that there's better access, whether it's a shuttle bus, but to bring the business from the shipyard to the downtown, and quite frankly, the other way as well.
And do you have any, any inside knowledge, foresight? I wonder, having done the permitting down at the shipyard, what the fate of the MBTA ferry service is. Obviously, it's going to be demand-based, but is the town looking at, you know, any of those parking elements with respect to that huge MBTA lot? What are your thoughts?
Yes. So, yes, we are in touch with the MBTA in terms of the potential uses of that lot. It is, it's a great resource if we can tap into it. I think the MBTA is committed to continuing ferry service. They put a lot of money into the new terminal there, and they have major plans just to make sure that their facilities are upgraded for handicapped accessibility. So I don't see them walking away, and we are in touch with them on a regular basis.
Excellent. Yes, yeah. Obviously, that's huge. I think that took everyone by surprise some time ago. And I expected it, you know, with being in, you know, in contact with them, that that's something that you folks can monitor. Just the, obviously, the importance of that is just tremendous to the town. If I could shift real quickly.
Before, before you shift, before you shift, I just wanted to, our state rep, Jo Muschino, has really been instrumental in assisting us with the MBTA. So hats off to her.
Yeah, excellent. Affordability, residential, you know, we're in, we're in a somewhat unprecedented, I won't call it a bubble, but it's a pretty interesting expansion of prices reductions in inventory. And I think Hingham now is, if it wasn't a super expensive place to live, really is, you know, it's really stepped up. What are your thoughts on where Hingham goes forward? I mean, we, we've gone from kind of this rural, you know, suburb to maybe we're in a transition to a, you know, you know, a more vibrant suburb. The world's getting smaller. People are now working at home. What are your thoughts on the next 10 years, 15 years for Hingham, and how housing affordability plays into that?
Well, I'll begin by saying I was hoping you were not going to use the word suburb, because I think Hingham prides itself in being its own town. And I think our goal and the goal of most residents is to retain that identity. We're not going to become a suburb. And in terms of affordability, we have a very strong commitment. As you know, we've achieved the standards for affordable housing, but that doesn't mean we've stopped. Our Affordable Housing Trust is really committed to increasing our inventory. The town is always on the lookout. And that commitment is not going away. In fact, as prices of homes rise, that ultimately will lead to more resources available to the town to devote to affordable housing. So the town's commitment is there, but you're right. We are seeing significant increases in real estate prices.
So where, so, and I appreciate that Hingham, you know, Hingham does chart its own path. I mean, we're known for that, and it's, you know, it's, I think it's, it's an extraordinary outlier for many reasons. And perhaps, you know, perhaps that contributes to pricing because the town is so desirable. The next 10 to 15 years, what do you, what do you see as far as just whether it's expansion of business growth of perhaps the industrial park, now the South Shore Park? What do you foresee? What would you like to see?
Well, I foresee a couple, a growth in a couple of areas. First, I think the waterfront is one of the most valuable resources of the town, and that will continue to both grow and be guarded, and be guarded, I mean, preserved. We're dealing with sea rise, and we're doing what we can to protect the infrastructure there. And also, as I mentioned earlier, integrate, better integrating the waterfront area into the downtown and to other aspects of Hingham. So I really see both growth and preservation in the waterfront. South Hingham, as you know, is, has a lot of development potential. I do have to say that I continue to mourn the loss of Rich Beal from A.W. Perry. He and I worked along with a good working group in developing plans there. Jeff, you were part of that. And I got to tell you, his passing was both a personal setback as well as a setback for the town. But there will be substantial growth in South Hingham. We are looking, the town is looking at making sure that we have adequate water, sewer, power, so that those developments- so that those developments can prosper. And in part of that will, I believe, involve coordination with our neighboring towns.
So more of a regional approaches, expansions of, you know, kind of regional, but transportation? Or what elements would fall in that bucket?
I was really thinking more in terms of sewer and water, which, you know, we're right there on the town lines and it makes sense to be figuring out how we can share certain things. Are you frozen? Jeff, you there? Very sorry, I think I got frozen for a second.
Sorry about that. I've just got to jump in there. We actually had a poll taken out in front of, in front of my home. I can hear HMLP out there right now. We have a little bit of a power down.
They're working hard. Good.
HMLP, that's it. We, yeah, that's, that's our, I think, what a Hingham's brightest. If I talk to somebody from Cohasset, Situate, so many towns, Weymouth recently. HM is the, our crown jewel of municipal departments. They're fantastic.
Yes, I mean, the day after the, the day after the storm, I think less than ten percent of Hingham had power issues and over sixty percent of Weymouth had power issues. So there's a real, there's a real difference and HMLP has just done an incredible job.
Yeah, they certainly have. And with that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to see if we can open up to some of our, some of our other attendees, if they've got any questions. Appreciate you went through these issues, many of which I didn't really recognize as being on the radar screen. Obviously, they are and perhaps COVID and different communication is, you know, been one of the reasons that, you know, a lot of these points aren't kind of out there, or at least I'm not necessarily aware of them. So I really appreciate that very much. With that, Eric, can we open up to any questions of attendees?
Yep, we can. And if anybody does have a question, you can either use the raise your hand function or step in, just be sure to identify yourself if you would. And we'll go from there. So if you have any questions, just use the raise your hand function and we'll call on you. And until we have that.
Eric, I don't see the raise your hand. I see a chat line. So if I can open up, I'll be glad to.
Yep, if you want to, okay, if you don't have a hand function on your system, by all means, just jump in the chat or again, just.
So first of all, Joe, thanks and Jeff, thanks for the great questions you asked because it was several I just crossed off my list, which is really nice. I'm interested, Joe, on that, the zero sum two thousand forty. What's our baseline and how do we measure it? Is it just carbon emission? And, you know, where do we stand now to say, hey, is that a realistic goal? And what incremental changes would we see over time?
So the first question you asked, which I think is a fundamental question, how do we measure it? And I am not an expert in that. I can't tell you the best way to measure that. I know that that is part of the Climate Action Plan Group's goal is to make sure that we have appropriate measures. And there are international standards groups, groups that are coming up with measures for that. There is, however, a, I can get my computer going here. There is a measure that the Department of Energy has developed. And I'm just pulling up. So the Department of Energy defines a zero energy building as an energy efficient building where on a source energy basis, the actual annual delivered energy is less than or equal to the onsite renewable energy, renewable exported energy. So they are doing a basically input-output analysis, energy used versus energy exported, for example, from solar panels, things like that. And they're looking for that to be equal to or less than zero.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of carbon coming out of cars, for instance. I don't, I don't know how you would measure other than here's electric cars and you have a number and what is our baseline now?
Right.
I don't know if that's a bold and audacious goal or it's something, oh, we can easily do that. And that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, no, it's great. And it goes beyond a measurement question. It really goes to geography. On what basis are you doing that measure? Are you doing it for a building, for a block, for a town, for a state? And I don't.
For a pound.
Right.
What you had said.
Exactly. But, but it's clear that we need to start. Even though, you know, it may be different towns pursuing different goals. We need to start and inaction is not an option.
Thank you.
And I see that Mark Bonarigo has his hand up. Mark, you have a question for Joe?
Yes, first, thank you for participating in this. Appreciate it. I have two very different questions, actually. One regarding that zero, it was my understanding, I'm not sure if this is correct, but at least the East School and maybe the middle school with their rebuild had the possibility for solar panels. And I don't know if the town has taken any steps in that direction towards renewable energy?
I am, I don't know the answer with respect to those schools. I, I'm not sure what action has been taken on that.
Another question, completely different topic, is supporting downtown businesses. You mentioned the possibility of a shuttle. I know Senator O'Connor just posted that Hull has received some funding for a shuttle in the town. I think it might be a great concept for Hingham. Another related is, you know, drawing people in, whether it's people coming in off the ferry or if it's people staying over. Perhaps taking a look at the rules for B and Bs again. I know personally, I've got friends who were coming in for about a ten day stay in the spring and they're going to be staying in either Hull or Weymouth. And they'll be spending money in those towns that I'd preferably like to see them stay here. Even if it was concentrated more in the downtown business district, a little more flexibility in the rules because what I've seen of them, it looks like it's pretty onerous to open a B and B. And I think I hear a lot of people saying it would be great to have something like that in towns if people could stay here.
Yep, and those, you're referring to our zoning restrictions. And those are, there are groups that are looking at the possible changes to zoning bylaws. I can't tell you whether it's specifically on the B and B issue, but, but that is a specific zoning concern. And, and I hear, I hear your perspective. Thank you.
I mean, if I could interject, Joe, Emily Wentworth's new position, could you, do you have the ability to go through that? I think that she would be instrumental in answering questions or having follow-up on questions such as that.
Exactly. Yes, yes. So Emily is, has moved on, has moved up, I would say, in terms of doing planning and her perspective and on this issue and a range of planning and zoning issues will be something that the board, the select board will be considering.
Right. And so Emily Wentworth is, she's one of the planners, senior planner. And she, she's over time, you know, been kind of the liaison agent for the ZBA. She's got more of a business kind of development, looking at, looking at opportunities from a little or an additional lens perhaps. So I think Joe and Tom Mayo, the selectmen, really had, you know, a really good view of opportunities and how to look at things coming out of COVID. And that's been one of the really good reactive results, if you will, of coming out of, you know, that, that, I'll call it a crisis, I guess. Perhaps it was. But thank you, Joe. Additional questions for Joe?
See any hands raised? Joe, I have a quick question for you regarding tax classification. Split tax rate. I know that Hingham is a single rate town and we certainly appreciate that. What are your thoughts on tax classification?
Right, so right now, it's unified tax. It's the same rate. Residential real estate represents about eighty-nine percent of our base. So if we were to do an increase, you know, just on the commercial side, it would barely have an impact on the residential side. So my perspective, and I voted on this for two years, is to keep a unified rate. It, I think it really protects the small businesses in town. And it's no secret that you raise real estate taxes. It will then be passed on to the tenants, to the businesses that have been struggling to survive. And our goal is to keep those businesses going. So I, while that's an option that can be on the table, at this point, I don't, I don't see that as something that's going to be pursued.
And again, Joe, we appreciate your support on that issue and recognizing that businesses and many of the businesses and most of the businesses in Hingham are in fact, small businesses. And like everything else with inflation, the cost of everything has gone up on every business. And it, you know, coming on the heels of COVID and trying to recover from COVID, you know, strapping businesses with an extra tax burden certainly would be detrimental. So we certainly appreciate your help and we appreciate the fact that you recognize the struggle that a lot of the small businesses are going through. So thank you.
Yeah, but I mean, it is, it is a subject that is brought up each year. This is like war. It has not yet been brought up and there'll be, there'll be debate and discussion. And ultimately, we will, we'll do what we believe is in the town's best interest.
Great. Okay, and Joe, thank you very much for your presentation today. I think, again, you've raised a lot of issues that many of us were not aware of. Also, I'll say that you're going through some of the financial responsibility. And I saw some of that in real time, just as a frequent user of Town Hall and Municipal Services. As, as everybody, you know, really did the best that they could during those times. I must say, I wasn't necessarily aware of all of the financial moves that you were putting into place. And I just think that, you know, that's, that's one thing. Hingham, we're very strong, we've been run so well. And it's interesting when a test comes like that, it's kind of a on-the-spot stress test. And it looks as though we're, we're going to do all right. And I just wanted to recognize that I was not necessarily aware of that. Are there follow-ups?
If I can just add to that, our town administrator, Tom Mayo, really led the effort there. His entire staff, Michelle Montziger. And it's, it was really a team effort and it continues to be a team effort. We've, we now have another assistant town administrator, Art Robert. And we remain vigilant and very optimistic as to how the town will progress over the next years.
Obviously, we have to keep, you know, between fire, HMLP out front, police, everything, particularly the schools. Do you have any comments in closing on just the ability of a school committee and the schools to kind of react in real time, deliver what they, you know, they need to deliver under these circumstances?
I do, but before I, I go to the schools, there's one other group that I think we really need to mention, which is, it's the Senior Center, which is a major resource for the senior population of the town. It is, it remains a priority for the select board. And one of the reasons, one of the benefits of the public safety, the proposed public safety building is to free up space at Town Hall so that we can expand services at the Senior Center. Jennifer Young, who's the director there, is doing a fantastic job. They coordinate with library. And so that is an aspect of the town that will not be neglected. And it's, it remains on our radar. Getting back to the schools. This year, since I've been chair, I got to tell you, I've been more involved with the school committee. I have been so impressed with their commitment to the kids, to the staff. It's, it's amazing, if from my perspective, they are, they are, they are so hardworking. It's, it's, it's just, sometimes I'm embarrassed. I mean, we've got our meetings, they got theirs and it just, they really do a tremendous job. Their ability to respond, to deal with mask issues, to deal with sports. And, and deal is not the right word. It's, it's, they are promoting and they are safeguarding. And they are doing the very best that they know how to do to make sure that our kids are successful. So I am, I'm just blown away at how, what a great group of members we have on the school committee.
Right, that's, that's a well-deserved recognition. I'm glad, I'm glad you went through that. It's again, a lot of people just see the end result, which, as we're all working through COVID, you know, it presented a lot of stresses, whether it's parents, kids, you know, the whole system. And it's, it's good to recognize what it takes to be able to continue the services for the children. That's.
Right. And then on top of that, they did a search for an interim superintendent. Now they're doing a search for a permanent replacement for the superintendent on top of everything else. They're doing their own strategic plan. Their focus on school finances is, is, it's great. So hats off to them.
Excellent. Well, with that, is there any way that folks can follow up with you on some of the open questions that you had posed? And obviously, for anyone interested in these points, Eric Dykman at the Chamber could also be a liaison. But Joe, is there, is there a contact that, that people can reach out to you?
Yes, so the best thing to do is to send an email. And my email is, just looking up, make sure I get it right, it's fisherj, F I S H E R J, at hingham-ma.gov. And I will respond. And it's, it's great, it's really great, not only to get suggestions, but also to get criticisms, things that we can do better because that's how we know we need to do better. So I would welcome comments, suggestions. And oftentimes, we get, the select board gets emails and the people are giving us their thoughts. And they end by saying, we know you're real busy. We know that our email doesn't require response. We just want to know that you're listening and we are listening. So it's, it is good to hear. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Hingham Business Council, the business community, we appreciate what you've been doing and hope that you actually get some, some follow-up and feedback. And again, thanks so much for speaking to that group this morning.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you all.